We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order. We're here at the Administration Building. It is Tuesday, January 12th, and it is 6:30 PM. We're going to begin by having the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask for everybody to remain standing for a moment of silence to honor Charlie Cox and Matt Taylor, two very revered employees of Fayette County School Corporation who passed away in the past couple of weeks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to begin with seeking a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I so move.
Thank you, Angie. Do I hear a second?
Madam President.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Tonight, we have a little different order for our meeting. We begin with the election of school board officers, so we'll be doing that. Then, we will adjourn that meeting, and we will then have a finance meeting, and the GAB will be turned over to the current president of the Finance Committee, which is Andy Yarian. So, we're going to begin with the election of school board officers, and I would ask if there's any nomination on the floor for officers or a slate of officers.
I'd like to make nominations.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Leslie for Board President. I would like to nominate Lori for Vice President. I would like to nominate Ann for Secretary, and I guess myself for Assistant Secretary.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Well, any other nominations on the floor? Okay, seeing none. I suppose we ask for...
Close nominations.
To close nominations, and then we will ask for a motion to approve the nomination, the slate of officers that have been suggested.
I move that we close nominations.
Do I hear a second? Thank you. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Now, I would request a motion to approve the nominated slate of officers.
We have a motion.
Thank you, Angie. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and that will adjourn the election of school board officers.
Are you ready?
I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think we have to wait five minutes.
It will begin at 6:40.
Yes. Okay. Let's plug them in. Is that always confused? Yeah. Okay.[827.12]
You've built up some additional cash balances that allowed the school district to pay for things that most school districts would have to go out and get a bond issue and borrow money to do. So I think all the way along, if there's anything I can emphasize, and I'm the new outsider here, but if there's anything I can emphasize looking even at the last four or five years, is that this school district has looked at declining enrollments. They have made the prudent changes, staff, there have been staff cuts administratively, teacher staff, instructional staff, all the way across the board, that has kept the staff in line with the revenues coming in and likewise has put us on a firm foundation financially that continues on into today and will continue that on into the future. The next one really shows this, and this is just the fund balances of all funds. So whether it's debt service, educational fund, operation fund, whatever those funds might be, this is simply showing that right now, or excuse me, in 2019, it's actually probably came a little higher in 2020, but the latest data there in 2019 shows that our fund balances dropped to fourteen, or forty-four point seven percent of our, is our total revenues. And this, you may look at it and go, ooh, what's happened here? Most school districts are probably in the fifteen to twenty percent category. So this is significantly better than most school districts in Indiana. And again, I compliment you on a very healthy budget for this. Next one, this is just another graph, gives a little bit of, shows where most of the, or shows where all of the funding comes from. But you can see that the biggest portion there in the bluish color, I guess we'll call it, comes from the state revenues. The other one, though, I really want to point out is the very bottom, and it's probably good that it's there because it really shows the foundation, the most stable set of funds that we receive all the way across there come from local property tax dollars. So while the local property tax dollars are not used for teacher salaries and administrative salaries and the educational part of, if that comes from the state, that underlying foundation there of the local property tax dollars are what's used to maintain our buses, our transportation, our buildings, our facilities, all of those parts that are integral to providing education, that's a good way of putting it, is just showing that firm foundation and the stability of those. So, you know, while we've had economic ups and downs over the last ten years, that has remained virtually stable through that whole period of time. So-
We will see a difference. We're down about 1.3 million this year in our property tax revenue. So we're starting to feel the effects of those property tax caps more than ever. So this looks pretty good here, but we're going to start seeing some significant changes now with our revenue.
And that's growing with the tax caps?
Yes.
This goes back to Really Wood I talked about earlier. This shows a little bit about the interest that we have received. And this also, I'm telling you, is going to decrease because some of these were built on, we had some CDs and things paying one and a half and two percent. They have decreased from that. But last year, we made approximately $24,000 that goes into the educational fund. We made almost $310,000 that goes into the operations fund. So these are money that some people start getting worked up when I talk about investments. These are not buying the high-flying stocks. These are, these are controlled very much by the state of Indiana and by our limitations. So these are in very safe certificates of deposit that we know we are going to get interest off of those and we're going to be able to maintain the principal that's put underneath these. So sometimes as soon as people say investments, they immediately think of, oh, some wild crazy stock that may make a million dollars today and lose $2 million tomorrow or something. And that is not what we're talking about when we talk about investments by a school district.
Can I ask, like Fund 0101, so is that interest on the monies we get from the state? Where's that money coming from then?
That's coming from the money that we have in our cash balances that, I mean, altogether and the, I think, well, you'll see it later on here in a slide, but altogether, we have about, I think it's about $7 million that are invested in CDs and those kind of things. We have about $11 or $12 million that are in cash accounts. So, but that's a combination of all of our cash balances across all funds. It's not just the educational fund, it's not just the operations fund, it's across all accounts. And the next one, a little bit harder to see, but this, this shows you exactly where our interest was obtained during 2020. It shows the CDs that we had in there. So the highest one right there is at 2.178%. You can see that one is coming to end here in a couple of months. And you can see the ones that go out there farther paid less interest. So the interest market continues to decline and-
What, what are we, what's our refinance? We have this one material, but it was at .45.
I think it, yeah, .45, .45, yeah, going from two percent down to .45, so.
So when we put that money in a, in a, in a CD at 2.176, was that probably four or five years ago?
Most likely, yeah.
Yeah. I think it was three, I think we did a thirty-
Let's say two or three.
On that.
Yeah, okay.
On those top two, we went long return because we had good rates. We knew that things were going to be dropping.
Yeah, so I mean, with, with finance options that we have at this point, basically, the only thing that we can invest in is CDs and just continue to get-
Money markets.
Yeah, and there's no, I mean, they're all going to be 45 basis points, 40 basis points at this point.
And you see that they're lower interest rates, which also means that we're going to make them shorter terms that if the markets would turn around, then we could put it to higher interest rates. But right now, it's so low that it really can't get a whole lot worse. So, you know, you keep it as short a term as you can so that it allows money to go longer if things should change.
Yeah, we're re-upping a 12-month term on that, just hoping that maybe we'll see an increase in 12 months because they want you to lock it in longer, obviously, and we chose, I think, just the 12-month.
Yep.
And would it matter? I mean, what's the change of interest if you held longer? Is it much?
And you're looking, you know, five basis points, yeah. Yeah, you go from .45 to .05, or .50 or something. It's minimal.
Yeah.
But I will, I'm typing, sorry.
Okay, yep.
About one thing that we are, we're, we have a conference call with Baker Tilly. There are, they have been in before, working with us on our bonds and refinancing some of those, refunding those. We have an opportunity to refinance some of those bonds and we could see several hundred thousand dollar savings. So just so you know, with these low interest rates, we can also borrow money cheaper. So we, that's Thursday, I believe, we have that meeting, Thursday afternoon. So we may be taking advantage of some of these lower rates to help us too in saving several hundred thousand dollars with those. So just an FYI, something we'll look at.
This is kind of my last main slide, but I'm going to refer you to something in your packet. I think you've got a spreadsheet in there that has just a, it's on, it's legal type paper, it's lots of numbers, lots of accounts and all of that stuff. What this is, is I know each month you've been accustomed to getting fund reports. And sometimes you see them go up, sometimes you see them go down. Generally, as a board member, you just see a bunch of numbers and go, well, how's that kind of compared to last month and what's going to happen in the next month? And sometimes you hear, you look at fund accounts and they're in the negative and it's like, why are they in the negative? And it's explained that, you know, we just haven't transferred the money in there, whatever it might be. So that's what this whole long chart is. What I've taken and put up here on the, the screen, though, is really kind of the way that I would like you to look at it kind of going forward. I've taken the five largest accounts that we have. The rest of them, sometimes when we talk about other accounts, they're, they're smaller amounts. Some of them are very small, some of them are a little bit bigger. But these are the five largest accounts we have, are the largest funds. So you've got the education fund, debt service, operations, rainy day, and then the career center. Funds are all in there. And what I'm looking at here is I'm looking at, okay, back in January, where were we? And now we're in December, where are we? And how's that project out on the future? So you can see that over the course of the last year, the career centers went down a little bit, but all of the other funds have increased, some a little more than others. But when you look at the course of the last year, again, shows that we're on a good trajectory, we're maintaining where we are, even though our enrollment continued to decline this year, just as it has almost every year over the last 10. So I, what, what I'm going to be working on into the future is this is a 12-month look back. What I'm going to be creating is a 12-month look forward, which the 12-month look forward is going to project out of where I see us budgeting for the next 12 months, and we haven't got there yet. But I can tell you, as I create that, it's like any other budget, whatever I predict in the future, I can tell you upfront, it's wrong. It's going to either be a little bit higher, or it's going to be a little bit lower. But if it's, if it's right on the money, I just got lucky. So we're looking both directions. We're looking at the past, are we going, judging on where we are, then we're going to be looking at the future. And there's sometimes, just as you've done really in the last couple of years with the rainy day and other thing, you may, we may be looking into the future and saying, hold it, these, these cash balances are decreasing. And maybe because, yeah, because we want to do this and we've got the money to do it. There are other times that it increases. This year, it began to increase. So that's really, like I said, those are the big accounts, looking at beginning of the year, January the 31st, and then finish out December 31st.
Question for you, two things. One, I think your rainy day fund is actually over a million dollars. At least that's what you've got listed, is she?
So what now?
Your rainy day fund is over a million dollars?
Yeah, I think, when he was working on guessing, the post-retirement, that's being based out. I think he took that one off and the numbers got transposed.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, we're at 1.1, whatever, yeah, I can't-
Wonderful.
1.092 million at the end of December.
And we talked about that one, and I did grab the wrong line there off of it.
That's okay. The second question-
It shows that I needed to go, I went to the eye doctor last night and I'm getting new lenses, so I beg forgiveness.
Good, that's all right. The, the other question I got, is that January 1 to December 31st? Is that what you said?
It's actually January, it's the end of January, so January 31st and December 31st. So it's not a true year, it's really more of 11 months.
Do you have December 31st in 2019 to December 31st 2020?
The answer is, I do have that. Do I have it on your, I don't have it on the chart. I, I had that calculated also, and I just cut it down to-
Okay.
Give it to 12.
Yeah, if you could, I'd like to just, just for curiosity's sake, I'd like to take a look.
Yep, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Why is there such a, I like it, obviously, we have more money in the operations fund. What, what's caused this significant increase in the operations fund?
Obviously, revenue's coming in. And some of it, once we got the fieldhouse done and those kind of things, at least in the last six months, we haven't had any large projects, we haven't done any roof projects, boilers, furnishings like that. And some of those big, big expenses are what keeps it there or takes it down. So-
Is, is any of this reflective of the savings that we've had from the solar field as far as is on our, on our electrical usage?
I haven't pulled that out, but just the, a couple of months ago, the Performance Services, so some of that, some of that, yeah, we will be, we will be reaping the benefits that our electricity costs and those kind of things are lower. So all of that, the things that are done there add into it.
Our LED light replacement across the district, and also we put the boilers and chillers in at the middle school, which are saving significant amount of dollars. So those are all in that same area. Yeah, so that's good to point out. And also, we haven't moved any money into the operations or into the rainy day fund. So that's part of that too at this point. So we're still staying right at a million in that right now.
So it's, financially, it looks like we're incredibly secure.
We are. I would use that word loosely.
Yeah, well, I do, I would, I'd be curious too, Andy's question, just seeing where we stand year to year.
Year to year.
As opposed to in one calendar year. But I'm guessing it's, well, I don't, are you asking what was our, what were our fund balances, January to December 2019?
So, I'd like to know if that's December 31st of 2020, what was our balances on December 31st of 2019? That's a full year. And so you're, that, that encompasses all 2020, but as well, that's January 31st or 30th.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, we kind of, it's an 11-month analysis, not 12, but I just kind of like to look and just, just see.
What, what I would be looking at probably in the future that you haven't normally did, is that month to month, I mean, not month to month, January to February, but annual month, compare-
Right.
January to January, February to February, March to March, et cetera, as we know about the year, that then you really do see-
Yeah.
The changes one year to the next year.
Yeah, it's an apples to apples that way. It's helpful, though.
I'd say that really wraps things up there with an overview of the finances.
I have the information.
I was going to say, I could have snuck out and grabbed a bit.
So comparison, our education fund, December 31st, a year from, can you pull that slide back up? Or?
Can we go back? What's this slide?
Okay. We had 8.3 million in the education fund when you compare it to one year from that data.
What was it? I'm sorry, Scott.
We were, we had 8.3 million when you compare it, December to December.
Okay.
Our operations fund, we had 4.27 million. Our rainy day fund, we had 1.8 million.
And that should be 1.0-
92.
92 now.
We had 1.82 million, actually. And what else do we have?
Career Center.
The career center had 1.57 million. But some of that has to do with the, the funding that comes in, because districts pay their tuition, we bill the other districts, and we get billed too. And so those funds do come in. So that fluctuates throughout the year.
What about debt service?
Debt service, we had $837,000. But keep in mind with that is that, that's money that should be going down some too, because, you know, in that year, because our debt was going down, but with the construction loan, because we financed the solar project, we paid cash for that, which is why, you know, the rainy day fund dropped in, in those ones. But-
And actually, the debt service, probably when you look at it, looks the most stable because what you have, though, we have debt payments in June and December, we get the tax revenues, June and December. So they actually, within the course of a month, go way up and way down relatively quick, but it looks kind of flat as you go across there.
But that's, that's pretty well set with our tax revenue that we get. So that's really controlled by our-
Yeah. That, of all of the accounts, and just the way that Indiana runs business, the debt service is the absolute most protected account of anything with any government agency that at all costs, I mean, it goes anywhere from the state legislature talking about having $2 billion in a rainy day fund to keep stable at the state, to requiring that school districts, if we paid nothing else, we would be paying debt service. If we didn't pay teachers, administrators, anybody else, we would be paying debt service. So that, because of the focus legislatively, that is our most secure and stable account.
Any other questions for Mr. Harris? Yeah, I would definitely like to say thank you, Scott, and thank you to Janie for doing such a phenomenal job financially, keeping us in such great shape over the past several years. And I'm sure Mr. Harris will do the same and carry on. So, yeah, thank you.
Every opportunity, you know, if we can refinance and save several hundred thousand, three or four hundred thousand.
Adds up.
It adds up. So every time we try to find some savings, that doesn't impact student learning. That's our priority is trying to impact the classrooms.
Absolutely. Excellent. So I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. All right, we'll say Lori, and then we'll say Mark for second. All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same. And then the meeting is adjourned.
Okay, we will call the public business meetings order now. We'll begin with any patron comments on agenda items, saying none. We will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 12/8/2020, the personnel report, retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera, the approval of the December 2020 claims, 58045 to 58277, the appointment of the corporation treasurer and deputy treasurer, the financial expenditure goals, and 2021 conflict of interest. Also included are donations, a donation of $842.50 from New Heights Christian Church to Frazee Elementary to be used for student needs, a donation of $1,500 from the Fayette Community Foundation to CHS to be used to purchase an AED for the fieldhouse. Okay, seeing the consent agenda, I would request a motion to approve.
Madam President, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll now move on to action items. Personnel report, Mr. Harris.
On the personnel report this evening, I'm recommending five different people for employment. Recommend Crystal Peters as special education assistant at Eastview, effective January the 5th, Eva Sutton for developmental preschool instructional assistant at Little Spark Preschool, effective January 11th, and under extracurricular, Jennifer Clifford as department chair at the middle school, beginning, from the beginning of the year, John Lemon as wrestling coach for Connerston Middle School, effective December the 14th, and Bertie Smith as department chair at the middle school, effective August the 10th also.
Okay, thank you for that. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the personnel report.
Very thoughtful.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll now move on to the resolution to extend the COVID-19 paid benefit days. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. President, Board. Well, it's been an interesting 10 months of our lives. And so I was, I was reflecting as I was writing, working on my evaluation summary documents for you and my evidence over the weekend, and I thought, wow, I don't think any of us would have guessed on March 13th, when we sent our kids home and our staff home, that the year would turn out the way it did. And it's, it's been a challenge. So one of the, the pieces that, as a result of this, is the impact that COVID has on our staff and students. And the federal government put into place, that was effective April 1st, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. And I think we all were thinking that that would extend. It's not going to happen right now in Washington, DC, maybe later. But I think we have an obligation as a district to still support our staff with quarantines and COVID issues that are related to their work, because it, it does impact them. So what the, the federal government put into place was they, there could be up to 10 paid days under this act where an employee could use for COVID symptoms and seeking a diagnosis, where they are required to self-quarantine to, to exposure of someone with positive COVID-19 test, or we advise them to quarantine based on their work duties here. And since that expired on December 31st, what I'm asking the Board is to make this retroactive back to January 1st, that we continue to allow the 10 paid days for employees if they did not use those days, that we would, that benefit would carry through until June 30th of 2021. And then in the, in, that, that takes care of one group, but we have had some employees who've been quarantined more than once, just because of the kids they work with or they have to work in close contact. So for example, a student who may work with as a one-on-one AED or in a preschool, you can't socially distance six feet from a three-year-old. So there's a lot of things that are shared by preschoolers with their teachers and assistants that sometimes not always pretty. But we deal with it, and our staff is dedicated in doing that. So if a, if a staff member has exhausted those 10 days that were outlined through the federal act, if an employee is traced back to where because of their work duties, and they're required to be quarantined or tested or missed because of something that is traceable back to their work duties as an employee of AK schools, I would like for that to be, you to give me, my office give the authority to approve additional days with the appropriate documentation. And all the employee has to do is run that request through their supervisor, and then it comes to our office where we can consider those extra days. We would ask that those extra days beyond the 10, those would be approved by us, and they would need to be documented that it was through their work in close contact with students or other staff that that happened. So this resolution gives our office the authority to extend those days and to provide those additional days through June 30th, or when the COVID-19 is no longer declared a national health emergency, whichever occurs first. So I'm hoping, it's, it's that, but we don't know that this would extend it through June 30th with your approval of this resolution.
So obviously, there's no more money through the Family First FMCA.
There was never any money.
Well, I understand, there's no money. There, there was possibility of reimbursement through tax credits.
For, for, this is not for us.
Oh, okay.
We, we don't get any tax credits. We are hoping that there is a new round of federal funding that's coming. We don't know how much yet, that they may allow some reimbursement for that. Because we're, we're probably talking about $200,000 or $300,000 already in employee costs that we've used on these days.
So the additional 10 days would come out of our operations fund?
Just, it's always been coming out of our funds.
Okay.
We don't get any tax credits as a public school corporation, you know? So we are footing the bill of this, but I, I think it's the right thing to do because, you know, our, our employees are exposed when they work with, with kids.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, they're critical. And so this would just give my office the authority to support those employees who are exposed at work, that it, I don't think it's right to penalize them when they're doing their job.
It's not.
Supporting kids. So, yeah. So we may have an opportunity to refund some of the costs, but there's been no word from the government that we could. So if they do provide that, we could refund some of these costs in our education or operation fund. At this point, we don't have any guidance for that. So we are just, we're footing the bill of it. And that's important point to recognize too, that it's substantial.
Yeah.
But we're supporting our staff. And so that's my recommendation to the Board with this resolution, to provide me the authority in our office to continue to support our staff with that.
I have a question about the verification, because contact tracing is, at, at best, not exactly a science. What kind of, what kind of documentation are you going to require from the people as far as is, obviously, they're going to have to be tested and test positive, you know?
Well, not necessarily.
It's very difficult to determine where, where they caught it, I, I think.
Well, you're never going to figure out exactly where, you know, people will say, well, I got it from this person. And it's hard to really tell. But what we do, if we are quarantining-
Okay.
Or requiring employees to be quarantined, or, you know, let's say Mr. Judd was with someone and working, doing his job here, that person had symptoms and didn't tell him, and then Mr. Judd finds out that they tested positive, you know, that's, that's easy for us to contact trace. Now, if we see, you know, Megan, you know, out at a wedding and, and socializing, and then 20 people from that wedding all get positive, and she says, I, I got, you know, I think I got exposed at this wedding, that's a little different. But again, everybody has that first 10 days. If she already used hers, then we would say, hmm, you're probably going to have to use your own benefit days for that, because that was through your own personal contact. So I, I commend our nursing staff and our principals. Kelly Guttiger's been just terrific with contact tracing. She probably spends about 80% of her day. And I think Randy and our principals were spending about half of their day every day contact tracing and doing that. But we really will rely on, are we requiring you to miss or were you exposed? It's, we can usually figure that out. And we don't want to penalize that employee. So, good question.
Obviously, obviously not, yeah.
Any other questions on that? So I submit that to you for approval. That would take effect January 1st until June 30th.
Okay, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the resolution to extend the COVID-19 paid benefit days.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Andy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we have a discussion item, Ms. Corsaro on NWA data report.
Thank you, Laura, President, Board. I'm going to pass this out just because some of the graphs, when you put them up on the screen, they don't always come through as literally as you would like them to. As you know, NWA is a norm reference test that we can use to compare students- As you know, NWA is a norm reference test that we can use to compare student performance in grades in comparison to how other students in the same grade score. It also gives us an opportunity for our teachers to use the information to guide instruction. So we've just been kind of looking at NWA over the last couple of years. And tonight, I really want to focus on two things. One, I want to kind of give you guys an idea of the correlation between NWA RIT scores and I-Learn performance. And then the second one would be to take a look at what the gap in the last nine weeks in March going to the end of the school year, what impact it had on our NWA score. I think it's just nice to kind of put it out there. It is what it is. We may not like it, but it allows us to look at it and then make adjustments as needed. So just to kind of start, just wanted to give you an overview of how NWA is measured. And they use what they call a RIT score, a RASH unit. And a RIT score is just a student's score that indicates the level that the student was answering at least 50% of the questions correctly, 50% of the time, or yeah, answering questions correctly 50% of the time. So these RIT scores help the teacher understand what skills the student is ready to be working on in class right now. So as they get the student report, they can look at the RIT scores, they can see where that student has scored, and then they can determine whether or not they are at grade level, below grade level, above grade level, and then differentiate their instruction to meet them where they are. So it's a great tool for our teachers, but it's also a great tool for us as a district as well. Recently, when they switched from I-Step to I-Learn, we had to take I-Learn a couple of years before NWA could do the correlation between RIT performance and I-Learn performance. And this is a graph from NWA, so I wasn't able to change the color of it. So that's why it's green. I wouldn't have chosen green, but they obviously liked green, and I wasn't able to change it. So it's probably easier to view this one on your paper. But they have already done the correlation of I-Learn and NWA performance. So if you look at this chart, what they're saying, and let's just use third grade reading, they're saying that a student at third grade scoring a RIT range of 193 to 206 or scoring in the 61st percentile has a 50% chance of passing I-Learn. So they have to be in the 61th percentile. If you go to the column next to it where it says I-Step reading, that same student to pass I-Step or have a 50% chance of passing I-Step only needed to be in the 45th percentile. So you can see that the expectation between I-Step and I-Learn is already different. Now, you really can't use the RIT scores for the I-Step because they renormed in 2020, but you can use percentiles. So even though the RIT bands change in terms of numbers, the percentiles do not because they're comparing them to other students. So I think what's important to see in terms of this diagonal box, when you look at reading, is while I-Step started at 45% as a third grader and at eighth grade it was, you had to be in the 60th percentile. If you look at I-Learn, most of our kids have to be at least in the 50th percentile or above to even have a 50% chance of passing. But if you look at the other end of that percentile band, you're looking at a high percentage, 87th percentile, 82th percentile, 85th percentile, 83rd percentile. So the expectation of these cut scores for I-Learn, the I-Learn cut scores are a lot higher and our kids have to perform at a lot, much higher level. So that's, that's challenging. If you look on the flip side of that, while math is kind of almost the complete opposite, to pass I-Step math as a third grader on the I-Step, you need to be in the 45th percentile. I-Learn is still in the 45th percentile. But if you look at that same percentile range, if you go down to eighth grade, an eighth grader has to be in the 76th percentile to have a 50% chance of passing I-Learn. So it gets harder for a kid to pass math than it does reading. And that's asking a lot. You're saying that the top 25% of kids should pass. So that's really
A 50% chance.
That's, to me, is a very difficult feat for us to try to accomplish. And I'm not really sure. I know we, Megan and Trish and I met with NWA and the lady that actually is our coordinator now is leaving, she's retiring, but we're getting a new lady. I think she was from Pittsburgh, somewhere.
She lives in Indiana and has been working up in Pittsburgh, and now she's excited to live.
Yeah, and she could not believe how high I-Learn cut scores were in comparison to other state tests. She said, we are the highest, we have the highest expectation of performance for our kids. So I think that's important for everyone to know that the bar is really high for these kids and our teachers. And so when we get these scores, that's why we did see that big drop in our I-Step performance versus our first year. Obviously, it was a new test, but the bar was raised drastically between what our kids were expected to do on I-Step and what they're expected to do on I-Learn. So I just kind of wanted to share that information and those numbers with you because I think that it's important to understand that. Oops, clicked off that one.
Kim, is this legislative, I probably know the answer to this, but these cut scores and all this, this is legislatively driven, correct?
Yeah, I would say.
Oh, well, no, because, because
I mean, they, they decide what the cut scores are as a state.
But they're not in the classroom and
Exactly. I don't disagree with that comment.
Okay, okay, because that, to me, this places a horrendous burden on, on teachers' period and on students.
On students.
And, yeah.
It's a hard pill to swallow when you look at what they're expecting our kids to be able to do, to be in the 75, you have to be in the 75th percentile in eighth grade in order to pass a standard case assessment.
And I don't think they considered the developmental appropriateness of some of the concepts if you look even at the third or fourth grade tests.
Sure.
Yeah, because third and fourth graders don't think abstractly for the most part. They are still concrete learners.
Exactly.
Okay.
So that's just kind of a view of I-Step, I-Learn, the expectation, just to give you that it is what it is. I mean, I don't agree with it. I don't think anybody here thinks it's fair, but it is what it is, and that's, that's what we have to prepare our kids to be able to do. So this next graph is a way that NWA provides information to us as a district so that we can look at the district by grade levels. And it helps determine whether our growth as a grade level is greater or less than typical growth. So you'll see the little diamonds at the top of the bar that is actually as Fayette County students' growth. And then the bar is what they are projected to grow. So what NWA says, for example, is a second grader should grow, or first grader should grow in math 22 points. So then we look at where we fall, and if we grow 22 or more than that, we would be at that bar graph. So looking at the top graph, fall of 2019 to fall of 2020, you can see that this is where you'll see the COVID gap or whatever, for lack of a better term for it. The majority of our grade levels made our projected growth during fall of 2018 to 2019. However, when you look at fall of 2019 to fall of 2020, all that first grade failed to make typical growth. First grade hit, they were, they needed to make 22.2, they made 22.1, so they were right on it. But the rest of them, you can see in comparison to one year, we lost some momentum. So what that tells us as a district and as administrators is we need to make some adjustments in math. And it's, math is very sequential and skills build on other skills. So by not having kids in classrooms and being provided direct instruction in the last nine weeks, you can see that they lost some of those skills or they weren't able to bump up to their grade level skills because maybe they just didn't see those concepts. Because we tried in the spring not to overwhelm our parents and our kids and provide a lot of new material, but make it more review just because we felt like that was in the best interest of our kids at that time. So this tells us we need to make some adjustments for second semester and try to kind of go back and catch up on some of those skills that we missed.
And something that Ed and Leslie and I were talking about is before the meeting, there are a lot of people out there saying, kids are fine, kids, kids are fine. That's not, kids aren't fine, and kids aren't bouncing back from this as quickly, just the impact of the social distancing and the social isolation and the uncertainty of coming to school with, you know, all this. So, you know, we, you look at fall of 18 to 19, that's, that's, that's pretty good. I mean, that's something we should be proud of, that we met those targets. And that's a very, when Kim brought that to me, it was like, wow, we need to get this out there to the Board too because math is, it makes sense. And math is not math that was when we were kids. It's a little different.
And even our kindergartners coming in, you know, obviously, kindergartners still have growth, but even our kindergartners coming in, you can see that they didn't come in as high as they did the year before.
Do you think that the Little Spartan Preschool and the fact that we're getting more, we're front-loading it better, will begin to see, in the future, will begin to see, reap the benefits of that because they will be coming in better prepared to kindergarten, so their skill level is going to be
And Kelly and I are tracking those kids that started preschool with us the first year. We're tracking their NWA scores to see over a period of time if they trend to be higher than a student that may not have the same experience.
That would be really interesting, that would be really interesting to see because that's, that's a big investment that we're doing.
So Scott, real quick question. So I mean, looking back at those slides there we had previously, just in math in general, and then, do you feel, and this is kind of totally speculation, and it's probably more national, not global, do you think that we're going to look back five, seven, eight, 10 years, however long it is, and say, this generation of students, kids, there is either a social gap like we're talking about as far as, you know, your social interaction, there's a gap there because of COVID, or their educational skills, you know, whatever they've learned is kind of falling behind and it's, you know, I don't know, I don't want to, I'm not trying to stereotype anybody, but I'm just trying to look at that. I thought we've had kids out of school for so long or in and out or, you know, kind of hybrid systems that we're going to see those kids fall behind in society or some of them be at higher risk for issues? Does that make sense?
That's, that's a hard one to guess.
And like I say, it's totally speculative.
The kids are resilient. I mean, they are resilient, but I don't, I don't think we'll know, and we're going to certainly watch, but, you know, we're hoping with this new funding that we received, that we'll be able to provide more remedial opportunities, beef up our summer school opportunities. We haven't even gotten that part, and we don't know what's going to happen with funding, but we definitely have to work to close that. It's going to take years.
Yeah.
It's not going to be a one summer and we fixed it.
Right.
So this is going to be strategic on each of our principals' parts and our teachers as we plan for sure, because I think there will be long-term, long-term effects of this that will last.
I guess, yeah, that's just, that's my question, is do you
We're not going to know until we get there.
No, no, and as a classroom teacher, you endeavor to meet the educational needs of each of the children in your class. E-learning simply is not the optimum way for a lot of our students to learn. It's better than nothing because that's all we have right now, but it's not, it's not how they learn. And as a classroom teacher, you have that interaction and you might have 25 kids in the class, and you might have 15 to 20 different strategies depending on the kid and the, and the time of day. So we're, we're, we're giving them a one-size-fits-all, and the one-size isn't fitting anybody terribly well. Some kids are doing very well, very well, and I applaud them, but a lot of them aren't. And I have the same, some kind of fears that Andy does, that these kids that really need to be in the classrooms and be interacting with their peers and with the students, with their teachers on a one-to-one, their frustration levels, how much is this going to impact them going down the line? Because if, they can shut down, and unfortunately, a lot of them have. So we're going to have to deal with those kinds of, of issues also. And these draconian-type score expectations don't help that situation.
It'll be interesting to see what the state does with the accountability piece for this year because right now, we have not received, and Jennifer McCormick's out, so it's going to be really interesting to see the direction of education under this pandemic. And I hope they do, I hope they keep that in mind, that right now, this is bigger than just an I-Learn score to beginning kids supporters.
Do you think that the fact that so many parents have had to turn into teachers has given them an awareness that might trickle into the legislative process at all? Because parents were really glad to have their kids back in school for a variety of reasons, but they're not teachers. They, they do the best that they can do, but it's a totally different dynamic. So hopefully, some of that will trickle back too, because these kids have been punished enough, and to have something else be punitive legislatively would be just
I think teachers would agree with you.
I think a game changer, and I think it's going to be a great legacy, is that Little Spartan Preschool. I think of everything we've done here the last four or five years, that preschool, I think is going to be one of the ways we can help, just the impact, no pressure, Kelly.
Well, I also think we have less
It's such a huge piece of what we do.
Right, less, um Less changes for those kids too, that are kids in elementary, middle, and high school. And where I'm noticing some, I think you can't separate the social emotional element with the performance. I will be interested to see if there's any research on the number of students that have dropped out of college this first semester because it was all online. And where does that put them then, you know? So then they're waiting, and maybe they're waiting till next fall. I don't know if Andy, if Randy is seeing this at the high school, but the number of adolescents that I am seeing in my practice with anxiety is through the roof. And so, you know, you're going to have those kids, I've had kids who say, I don't think I can go back to school full-time. I don't know what that's going to be like. I don't want to do that. So I think the challenge will also be next fall, assuming we go back full-time, for everybody to get these kids like back into the habit of going to school every day and working.
I don't disagree. I think we have, we have a lot of things we have to tackle
A lot of pieces of the puzzle.
To respond, but on a more positive note, when you look at reading, you can see that in fall of 2018 to fall of 2019, all of our grades except for 1, 9, and 10 made their projected growth. And this fall, fall of 2019 to 2020, other than our foundational years, most of our grade levels were able to maintain or even have greater than typical growth. Our 10th graders, they have, they were actually showing greater than typical growth. So I think that's, that's kudos to our 10th graders that did, you know, the remote learning on, in the spring, you know, they still made that typical growth. You know, it's to be expected that your foundational years are not probably going to make that growth because the, a lot of your foundational reading skills in kindergarten in first grade happen second semester, especially in kindergarten. You start guided reading November, December, but you're really getting into that in the last nine weeks. So that's understandable. I think that's where we're really going to have to focus some of our remediation, some of our summer school, some of our efforts there to kind of build them up. But I think on the flip side of that, it's encouraging to see that our grades three through six, where they're already readers, they're reading for pleasure, they're reading for entertainment, or they're reading to inform, you know, they have the skills and they're maintaining those. And our 10th graders, eighth, ninth, and 10th graders either were at typical growth or exceeded it. So I think that's a positive thing, and I think we have to celebrate the positive. I mean, we, we kind of anticipated math not being as typical growth just because there are a lot of higher level skills that reduce the second part of the year. But with reading, our kids did really well in grades three through six at maintaining, and that, like I said, those 10th graders exceeded that. This is just another way to look at data. Sometimes the best way to kind of figure out what's going on is to look at it from multiple directions. And again, this is just looking at the mean RIT score. If you look at kindergarten, in math, the first column is just the grade level. The second column is the grade level RIT. What that means is that's the RIT that if they are on grade level, they should score. So you can see that our kindergartner So you can see that our kindergartners, their mean RIT for all of the kindergartners in the district in the fall of 2019 was 136.8. In the fall, it was 139.1. So they actually increased 2.3, and that's where we're contributing that back to our preschool. So many more of our, especially our title preschools, they're, they're starting those beginning foundational reading skills, and we're hoping that as we continue, we will see more and more of our kids come into kindergarten above that mean RIT. As you go down, you can see that we lost ground, and a lot of, again, a lot of these are math. So you're seeing that decrease in performance coming in from last year to this year. But then on the flip side of that, on the other side of the chart, you see reading, and we had a couple of grade levels that had some significant difference. Again, it's that first grade, where you have a really strong emphasis on learning to read. And then as you get to the upper grades, fifth grade had a positive growth, eighth grade had a positive growth, and tenth grade had a positive growth. And then we've got a few here and there that we definitely need to look at. But I think this just validates where we need to go back and make adjustments. It also helps us understand the impact that kids not being in school had, and it helps teachers kind of get refocused on what skills kids need. So just kind of wanted to share this with you and give you an opportunity to ask some questions.
So the previous, 2018 to 2019, what would have been, and this would just be from memory for your part, I mean, it's not on here, the previous year, what would be a typical, what would you expect between the fall of one year and the fall of the next year?
We usually stay, maintain our average RIT, or we go up a little bit.
Okay.
It's not usually drastic. And we, we do have dips. We do have cohorts that sometimes are not the same, do not perform at the same level. But it's rare that we dip like 7.7 or five RIT points. It's usually a matter of one or two. And we've been pretty consistent the last, if you look at the last five years up until COVID, we were maintaining, we were able to pinpoint certain grade levels that over time continued to struggle, and then we can go back and look at, okay, what happens in the curriculum in third grade? Let's look at the tests, and we can make those adjustments. But it's, it's rare that every grade level except one goes down. It's usually just one or two, maybe one or two in math, one or two in reading, but for an entire column minus kindergarten going down, that's not a normal performance for Fayette County students.
So the, I always loved NWA, because I knew what I was, the hand I was dealt.
Right.
So the data that we get from the fall comparisons from nineteen to twenty, then the teachers will know, have a pretty good idea of those areas, particularly in math, where they need to reteach, review, remediate, go back, go back to square one and start over again.
Right.
So we're not, we're not.
And they can go down to each individual student and look at that RIT band of where they had low performance, and then can tick, click on the learning continuum, and it'll tell them exactly what that student needs to be able to master in order to move to the next RIT. It's very prescriptive. And so a classroom teacher has a lot of resources within the NWA program on how to meet those individual needs of those kids. It also tells you, there's a, a class summary form that, you know, if you have a standard deviation in your class from one score to the next that's greater than eighteen, you need to probably do more individualized instruction, because you've got kids all over the place. Whole floor of instruction isn't working. So there are a lot of great.
Oh, yeah.
Measurement tools there that help a teacher know what they need to do to kind of make that gap. We're just going to have to be extremely intentional.
Yeah.
And trying to recover.
It's like, it's like the, the medicine for the prescription.
Exactly. But at least we know, like I said, that's what I love about data. It is what it is. We may not like it, but at least we know what it is, and we know how to change what we're doing to, to.
And NWA gives us that vital data.
Right.
That we need to make course corrections.
Yeah, now, I-Learn, you don't really get that. I-Learn's just like, here's your score, you don't really get a lot of error analysis on it. It doesn't really show student growth. And so NWA is a, is a really good measure for us as a district to see how our kids are performing and how they're performing in comparison to other peers their age and in their grade.
And what they need to work on.
And what they need to work on.
Thank you, Kim. This is so helpful. It's, and I love, I mean, I know teachers love NWA, but I like how the prescriptive feature will help our teachers to identify those kids. Thank you. All right, now it's time for public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none. Superintendent's Discussion Group reports. This may be more, I don't know where you want me to. Principal Director reports? Director of Operations report? Assistant Superintendent report? Before we get to Superintendent's report, I'm just going to share a little information to reinform the board, but also just for the public to kind of know what's happening here with our board, because Andy Yarian did not seek to run for reelection, but there was nobody opposing him, so he ended up having to maintain a seat until his resignation, which he did submit for February 28th. So Andy remains on the board with us till the 28th. And there is a procedure by which we have to adhere in order to replace that board member, since there was nobody that ran against him. It is District Three, which is Connersville Township, and anybody, we've already advertised on the website and in the newspaper, that anybody interested in running for the seat can submit a letter of application along with proof of residence to the Superintendent's office here at Central Office. And if you, those listening, if you need the address, it's 1401 Spartan Drive. We will be accepting these applications until noon on January 19th. So you still have another week to get those applications in. We do, as a board, have a right to reject any and all applicants, applications and applicants if we choose. Right now, we have scheduled a special session that I think everybody agreed, worked with their calendars, for January 28th at 6:00 PM to interview applicants for this board position. This meeting will be held in public, that is required by Indiana State statute. Then we meet again for a monthly meeting on February 9th, and Andy will be present, because he'll be here till the 28th. Unfortunately, he'll have to abstain on any decision-making, but we will then vote after this executive meeting, or this special meeting that we have where we've interviewed applicants, we then, as a board, will vote on who we would like to fill that seat. Hopefully, if everything goes as planned, that new member will then be sworn in at the March meeting, which takes place March 9th. So just wanted to let everybody know, if you're out there and you're interested in running for, in being a school board member or having a position on the board, please submit those applications. We're eager to see who turns applications in. One more thing that I just, we never usually, we don't usually talk about this in the monthly meeting, and there's no reason why we can't, and the public should know that every year, our superintendent is evaluated. And as a part of that evaluation process, we receive information on the progress of the previous year, and each of us as board members gets an opportunity to fill out an evaluation tool to evaluate the superintendent. This is, you know, we are in a position to do this based on our role as the board, since we hire and advise the superintendent, so that is our job to do. Previous superintendents have typically retired effective January 31st, so Scott's kind of stuck with that same calendar time. We don't have a set deadline by which we'd have to evaluate him, but we have always chosen to do it generally in February. It seems to fall around that time. And again, we've, we've chosen that as well. Board members, you will find, I believe it's in the manila envelope, is the evaluation tool. Everybody here is familiar with that. If you have any questions, please contact me. The easiest way, I think last year, you could submit them at a meeting, or you could drop them off with me, or however, and I think it's fine if you just want to bring them to the February meeting. We will be meeting February 22nd, and then executive session, not open to the public, at 6:00 PM, and that will be our opportunity to do the evaluation. So I think it's good to inform the public so they know how we operate here on the board, and, and then tossing those dates out in case anybody didn't have a chance to fill those in. So we will look forward to applicants for the school board seat, and we will have our executive meeting to evaluate Scott here in February. So, all right, now we'll move on to the Superintendent's report.
I'm going to be brief tonight. I say that every month. We'll snip her from the crowd over here, but update on the resource center building. At the last meeting, we didn't make any decision, and those have to be made in public, but the feedback from the board was, we need to look at the next steps for this building. To this point, I had not heard from anyone else. I had a local person who did mention finding a use for it, and I invited that person to come in to me, but I haven't had any success yet hearing back. But at this point, we are getting the environmental testing done this Friday. We, we took quotes from multiple vendors, and that's going to be done, just to make sure we know what is in that building as far as asbestos or other items that could increase the cost if we, if the board chooses to demo that building, or if someone is interested in purchasing it or something down the road, we'll know what's there. So that's, that's pretty standard practice. We can't do a request for proposals until we have that, because companies need that. So that's the next step. Ryan Gitsley's been working on that with Randy, so we will have that study done within the next, we should get the results in the next week or two. So that, that will be something coming. I just wanted to throw that out to the board. Love to find someone to take it on, but I just don't. I've talked to a couple other people locally, there's just not an interest for that because of its condition and, that's the reality of it. It's served us well for a long time, and so that will be something we will have to further discuss and get some direction from the board on, do we want to accept proposals from the public, like we did for Orange and Alkina? Those are the next steps for me with the board, because I think this is our window, based on some feedback I received from some of you. You know, the winter and spring is a better time to pursue that if we're going to look at demolition, just for the cost, I believe. So wanted to make you aware, that's where we're at. We're moving forward on getting that. The holidays delayed that process a little. Brian was having a hard time getting some quotes back over the holiday time, so he's able to get that moving forward. So that's that. Then the other, I just wanted to talk, I know that a lot of, of our lives with our kids are in chaos a little bit, because the uncertainty of cancellations and changes. So I want to commend our middle school and high school athletic programs and our leadership, because it's, it's a daily thing where you don't know who's calling next, to say, "I can't come," and then, you know, Trent and Brent are scrambling, trying to find opportunities for our kids. We've had to cancel some long-time events. We've had things canceled for us, but I want our, our parents and patrons to know that we're following the governor's orders on capacity of our facility. Because I get asked, "Why can we only have parents in there at these ballgames right now?" Or we're following the color coding that we've put out there that is in the governor's orders in capacity. And so if we're under red, it's just the participants, the student athletes and participants and their parents, and essential personnel.
Two vouchers.
You get two, two vouchers. If we're in orange, or yellow, or blue, we can have 25% capacity. So I just don't want those, those guys getting beat up over that, because they're following the direction I've given them, and I'm following the direction our health department and our governors provided. So it's a tough time, and we're hoping things will be normal when we get to those yearly events like prom and graduation. We will make it happen in some way for these kids, like we did last year. We just don't know what that's going to look like yet. But, you know, I commend the high school last year. They came through and really provided some good opportunities for our kids. The parade, I think that may live on for future years. That was really well received. So I just want the public to know that we, we are following the guidelines we have, and it's not Randy Judd saying, "We're doing this because," he's following the guidelines that I've given them, that I'm following. So it's important to know that, because there are kids who are missing out on opportunities again this year, like they did last year, and it's unfortunate. But safety and following the guidelines is what we must continue. Be diligent, wear your mask, wash your hands, stay away from those large social gatherings, and we'll try to keep our kids in school. Our hope is to be back to a regular schedule at the high school after next week. That's our hope. That was our hope last week, but we're trying. So I just wanted you all to know that there's a lot of work taking place in trying to keep our schools open and running, and we've been able to do that with our K-8 buildings, which I'm really happy, and our preschool.
Can you share a little bit about the, what the school corporation did for the funeral?
Oh, yes. Kim and I went to the funerals for both Charlie and Mac, and, you know, I remember Darryl Drew was with us for Charlie's, and I remember saying, "I hope I have half the words spoken about me that these two men did," and, you know, the legacies they left behind. But something that was unique for both, I think with our, our wrestling team, you know, I appreciate transportation and the high school working it out so those kids could go and be a part of that. Most of their parents were there, too. They sat as a group, Kim and I sat behind them, and they, they just represented all that was good with, with Connersville High School. That hurt. They're hurting. And tomorrow night is senior night, and we are having that Spartan Bowl, unless the other teams quarantine on us or something happens. So again, we're tied to the spectator limitations, but that's going to be, hopefully, a special night tomorrow for boys. And then Charlie, driving the bus, he was very proud, you didn't know, he loved the Spartan Express. And when that Spartan Express was delivered, it was dark one Friday night, and we were out here waiting for it, and Charlie shows up. He wanted to get on that bus and check it out. And I think some said, "That's Charlie's bus." I think a lot of the other drivers.
He was even buried in it.
Yeah, he wore his Spartan Express shirt. That's what the family chose to bury him in. But all the drivers wanted to recognize him, the ones who were able. So if you've seen pictures, I think there was a picture in the newspaper, and the drivers lined up on Veterans Drive at the soccer field complex on both sides of the road. Some had flags. I mean, it was really touchy. And then his family wanted the Spartan Express to lead the funeral procession. So one of our drivers drove it, leading the hearse to the cemetery, and they drove down Veterans Drive before heading up to Del Cemetery. And then the last vehicle in the procession was bus 1802. And so I just want to say thanks to our transportation department, you know, that there's, it's a family, and we're going to retire bus 1802's number, so that number will not be used again on one of our buses. I know there are some things that we'll be planning with our wrestling team as well to honor Mac, but it's tough. It was a tough way to start 2021. And I just, you know, we're stronger, we're as strong as a district, and, but it was touchy, and it's been hard. So keep the families, your thoughts and prayers, and keep our kids, you know, the wrestling team, the members of that, and the coaches who are stepping in and keeping the season moving, because there's, there's a lot of hurt right now.
Thank you, Scott, for sharing all that. Anybody have anything they'd like to share tonight, the good toys?
I would, I'm doing all the middle school games and a lot of the ones at the, at the new field house, and it's just so cool, because those kids are just so happy to be out there playing and competing. They really, they like having the crowd, but they're okay without it, because they're out there with their buddies, and they're doing what they want to do. And one little kid said, "I didn't know if I'd ever be able to play again after everything shut down." And so just to, just that, I think that is such a positive thing, you know, even if you're watching it on TV, sit on your couch and yell at the referees or something. I think the kids. I think the kids even feel that, that vibe. If you see them on the street, you see them in the grocery store saying, hey, you know, you're doing a good job, because it's different for them. But they're, it's, they're kids, and this is just, this is something normal in a time where everything is abnormal. And they can go out there and play for 24 minutes or 32 minutes and, and leave it all out on the floor, and they don't have to be concerned, they wear the masks on the, on the bench, but when they're out on the floor, they're just kids, and they're, they're playing ball and they're having a good time. So if you're watching it on TV, or if you're one of the fortunate ones that can come and watch in person, show them your support, because that's very hopeful to me, that, that these kids are resilient, but we gotta, we gotta let them be kids. And our athletic departments have done a fabulous job in allowing our kids to still be kids when the rest of their world is turned upside down.
Thank you, Ann. Anything else from anybody? Okay, Mr. Hunt. Right here, a second. All right, do I hear a second? Thank you, Dennis. Right on cue. All those in favor, signify with a raise in hand, pose same sign, meaning adjourned.